Appointment themselves or their family members are not able to. So we kind of open it up to seniors specifically, the additional vaccines that we received. And so I think that's a plan going forward because there is the technology literacy level that might not be the same for people who are of more advanced age that we're trying to meet because they are the most at risk for contracting the disease and dying from the disease. And to go back to your original question, which is, do we have any idea of when we're going to see an uptick in availability of vaccine? So the direct answer, we saw a little bit of an uptick. We handled it in terms of our seniors. The only thing I'm hearing is that Johnson and Justin have put in their application. I know the process takes a few weeks. So in a best case scenario, and this is just, you know, supposing, in the best case scenario, we can get an idea by the end, in about three weeks. So that's about the end of this month to get an idea. And then I don't know what other, you know, obstacles would be in the way before they could manufacture the millions that are required to make a real dent in this supply chain issue.
Well, I got to thank you because that targeting seniors who have no clue, no clue whatsoever, they either don't have access, or even with access, they can't negotiate through our website to book. That was a real, that was a real godsend to a lot of people. So I thank you all for putting that together. It really did help.
Hey, Dr. Gungill. I was just wondering, I haven't been down by the site. Are the people who are doing the vaccinations, are they volunteers?
No, the vaccinators are not volunteers. They're employees through Vault. The people who are shepherding people through the process are volunteers.
Are you, so would it be safe to say that you're always looking out for more volunteers to come down and help out? So if anybody can hear us, that they can somehow contact you to volunteer?
The need is not as great as it was before. But we do have a number of volunteers that participate in every event, so probably about six per event. Yeah, so it's not as great as at the first site that we had.
I just didn't know if you wanted to get the word out there for volunteers, but it sounds like you got it all under control.
Director, if I met, or good, I'm sorry, someone else.
No, no, please.
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Gungill. I don't think we can say it enough, but every week we need to say thank you for you and the staff and everybody for the work you're doing. We're really grateful for the way you represent the county. Apologies if I missed this, because I walked into the presentation a little late. Are we, are we getting data on racial, when people come in and get, and get immunized, are they, are we keeping track of racial data, of which racial groups are showing up and are not showing up? Are we keeping track of that?
So we have the capability through Vault to keep track of that. And it's an ask that hasn't been pulled yet. I'm hoping that when I get my F P on board, that he will be able to pull that information for us. But I can tell you from an anecdotal standpoint that we're not seeing African Americans, we're not seeing Latinx, we're not seeing a lot of Arabic people. It's not, it's not a very, I think we have to look at the data to be sure, but I can just tell you from when I'm there, it's, that's not who's there.
Yeah, I, I think we, and I was looking at the chart you did by municipality, you didn't mention Patterson, and maybe you can explain why, but Patterson looked extremely low, and I know they have their own site. I know they do, and we won't get into too much discussion of that, but they, but they do have their own site, but the numbers out of Patterson look very low, and Clifton and Wayne, you know, are, are one or two of our larger municipalities, but they're also, you know, municipalities where people, a lot of people have cars. And our site is great if you can drive. If you can drive to it, it's a great site, and it's very convenient for that. And I think it's convenient for most of the county, even up county. I think it's, it's not, it's not, you know, too, too tough to do it if you have an appointment. So I know there's limitations, but I think we need to think about that as a county and look at it, because I think our urban communities, especially we know that are more black and brown than are, than are suburban communities, and are less likely to have access to public transportation. I don't know if public transportation comes to that shopping center or not, but it either, even if it does, it's, 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 it's not an ideal, you know, situation. So I do think we need to think about that, and if we are able to get the racial data, I think it's important to counties diverse as ours to try to look at that, because we know even in ideal circumstances, that communities of color, especially in the African American community, are not showing up in the same numbers as, as other communities.
So if I, if I could as well, we've had conversations with the state, and the state has selected four or five cities throughout the state for a pilot program. FEMA is going to come in. Patterson was chosen as one of those pilot cities. So FEMA is going to come in for two weeks. In Patterson, it was collectively decided that we would try to target two different areas of the city. So one of the locations will be St. Luke's Church, and, you know, in the heart of the fourth ward, where we hope to be able to get to the African American community. And it is scheduled, although it hasn't been confirmed yet, to be the week of the 22nd. They'll come in, they'll have 250 doses a day for six-day operation, and then we'll come back four weeks later for the second round of vaccine. The other location is going to be St. Joseph's Roman Catholic Church on Market Street in Patterson, in the fifth ward, where we hope to reach the Latino community as well. Obviously, it'll be open to anybody, but the state obviously sees the data in terms of the black and brown population not being vaccinated at a higher rate as, as the white population is. So hopefully, that's going to increase those numbers for, Commissioner.
And Tony, are we, are we, and maybe we all want to discuss this here, or just generally, if, if the doses increase, are we, are we forward-thinking in terms of a second, you know, vaccine location? I know, again, if we have the doses, I mean.
Yeah, certainly, it's going to be a lot like testing, right? So once, once we get to that point, and once vaccines become readily available, you know, then it's going to be more trying to get to the people as opposed to the people coming to us. Because it is an issue, and, and again, our county is diverse. You know, we want to make sure that we service our up-county residents as well as our down-county residents. So that will definitely be a phase two, but it really is going to depend on the vaccines. Right now, we're getting 1,500. They're guaranteeing it's 1,500 vaccines a week. And quite frankly, it's not a lot. In our Model site, we believe we can do 1,200 vaccinations a day, and we're doing 1,500 a week. And if I could just transition, so beginning this Thursday, the 11th, the portal for making appointments will be open for a two-week look ahead. So there'll be 3,000 appointments available this Thursday, and then every other Thursday following the 11th, we will do the same thing. So we're trying to give people a sense of when the portal will be open, so that they're not, you know, chasing every day, going to the website and getting frustrated, because every time they come to our website, it says, no appointments available.
Yeah, I thank you for that. What, what time do they open usually?
Well, so.
It varies, right?
It, it, it varies, and it's difficult to say, and I'll be honest with you, even if we were to give a time, you know, we've said noon every Thursday, that the, the, the site would get so overwhelmed, we'd probably crash. So for now, it's Thursdays, not sure when it'll actually open up, but it will be every Thursday beginning, every other Thursday beginning on the 11th. So for the 11th, we'll book two weeks' worth of appointments. It'll open up again on the 25th of February for another two weeks' worth of appointments, and continue until such time we get more vaccine, and then we'll be able to either open it up more frequently, or open it up to more appointments in any given week.
That, that's really helpful, and that'll help everybody. It, it does crash when everybody goes on, but if they're persistent, within that day, they should be able to book. So that's good news.
Tony, I don't know if this was addressed, did you, did you talk about how you dealt with the snow day cancellations and how they were rescheduled?
Yeah, so last Monday during that big snowstorm, we took everybody from Monday, and we spread them out over the following Friday, Saturday. That was a second dose. Last Monday was the second dose, and we spread those out over Friday and Saturday. We took all of Tuesday. We, Wednesday was not the scheduled vaccination day, so we just took Tuesday and made it a Wednesday vaccination, same time, same appointment. You know, hopefully, you won't have to do that anymore. That worked well, and Vault reached everyone via email.
After compliment, Vault, they, Vault's really, what pros. I, I get compliments on all that stuff in there, and you know, there, a lot of them aren't working for Vault. It, it's just, what a great operation that's being run. So thanks, it really is.
Their, their customer service is, is really very good.
Mr. Director, aside, give somebody else a chance. Mr. Director, through you, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you. A quick question to either Tony and or Charlene, Dr. Gungill. So there was a total of 51,037 vaccines deployed in the county. I, I remember early on, we were having a conversation that 70% of the population needed to be vaccinated in order to reach herd immunity. Do we know if the people who are receiving the vaccines are actually county residents? Is this 51,000 a total of county residents that received it anywhere? Because we, we obviously have healthcare workers and police officers that work outside of the county that may have been vaccinated outside of the county. Do those numbers count towards us? And likewise, if someone who doesn't live in the county but works here, again, police officers, medical personnel, are those counted with us as well? Like, how, how are we breaking down that 51,000?
Right, that's a great question, Commissioner. The 51,000 represent Passaic County residents.
Regardless of where they were vaccinated.
Correct. And it also, obviously, includes the hospital, you know, anywhere they, they work, whether it's Passaic County or not.
And, and that total number we need to reach is in the 300,000 in terms of total?
267,000.
I'm sorry, how many?
267,000.
Thank you.
And just as a, a point of clarification, the county for our site is receiving 1,500 vaccines a week. We have Patterson that's receiving 700, Wayne is receiving 300, Clifton is receiving 300, and the city of Passaic is receiving 200. Then you have St. Joseph's Hospital that gets their own allocation, St. Mary's gets an allocation, and then there are a couple of other RiteAid's and some other, some other areas within the county that are also getting vaccines outside of our allocation.
Yeah, we also have North Hudson, the F Q H C in Passaic City, they also receive allocations from the state. So it's a, it's a big effort from a lot of different people.
Through the director, either Dr. Gungill or Anthony, do we know if the pharmacies have started giving the vaccines yet? Or are they getting any, you know, any of the vaccines at all?
So yes, they are. So RiteAid gets vaccines. I believe they get between 500 to 700 per week.
Wow.
Riverside Medical, they have two locations, and each location gets about 200 vaccines a week.
And where would someone go to access that information about the different places to go for a vaccine?
Great question. On the New Jersey, N J B S S, New Jersey Vaccination Scheduling System, but if I just go to the New Jersey website, the COVID-19 dashboard of COVID-19 information, that would get, that question would be answered there. All the sites are listed throughout the state.
I'm just wondering if we could put it on our website?
Put it on our, yeah, I, that's the idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Gungill? Okay, as usual, Doctor, thank you very much for all you do.
My pleasure, sir.
It's an incredible job that you're doing there, you and the staff and the volunteers. Let's keep going, let's keep it up, let's get everybody vaccinated. All right, thank you again. Next, Anthony, next.
Okay, so tonight we'll have the presentation of the 2021 budget introduction. I have on with us our CFO, Mr. Cahill, and our auditor, Steve Wilcox. Wave, looks like he's trying out for a Rocky movie there. All right, Micah is going to get up the slideshow here. Okay, next slide. That's all of you. A handsome group. All right. So our 2021 budget development, like always, starts off with a review of our table of organizations focusing in on vacancies and whether or not those vacancies are necessary to be funded. Micah, you could hit the spacebar there. Yep, thank you. Next, we review the operating expenses, looking at a five-year historic trend in spending. We review current and future grant opportunities. We examine future departmental needs so that we can plan for the future, identify potential risk areas, as well as put together a five-year capital request for each department. And anytime you guys want to interrupt, please feel free. So our vision is to continue to highlight our rich history and bright future by continuing to build on fiscal stability. We continue to focus on quality of life issues, assure, save, and maintain infrastructure, offer cultural and recreational opportunities for all of our residents and visitors, and we continue to offer support for those most in need with compassion and dignity they deserve. And our mission is to protect and preserve the quality of life for our diverse population. Clearly, 2020 put that to test, I think, right? All while trying to be effective stewards of the tax dollar. So our goals in putting together a budget, and as I have repeatedly said over the years, a budget document is not a one-year document. Whatever decisions we make this year will always affect future budgets. So we, we take, take a lot of care in making sure that what we're, what we're doing is not going to affect us negatively moving forward. And one of the big areas there is obviously to protect our county's bond rating. We continue to use a conservative budgeting approach. Obviously, one of our biggest goals, if not the big goal, is to stabilize taxes, and we're going to get in depth on each one of these as well. We continue to increase crucial appropriations, increase our reserves to ensure fiscal stability for future generations, and we continue to provide critical investment in our infrastructure, our parks, and our historic sites, as well as continue to reduce debt for future generations, and to continue to identify shared services with other municipalities and counties. So our first goal is obviously to protect the county's bond rating. In 2020, Moody's affirmed our AA rating, our AA1 rating, which is the second highest rating available for Moody's and the highest rating in Passaic County's history. This is just a little chart of the history going back to 1998 to present on where we have stood with the rating agencies. And I'll point out, in 1998, that was the heart of the Passaic County Utilities Authority debacle that was, has left this county with $4.1 million a year in debt in our budget, and as we like to say, not even a pencil to show for it. So at 1998, the county was downgraded to, to A3, and as you can see now, we are at AA1. So I am happy to announce that for the third year in a row, the county tax levy will not increase, and four out of the last five years, we have not increased the county tax levy. I spent a little time over the weekend looking at all of the county budgets throughout the state, and from 2017 to 2020, obviously, I don't have all of the budget information for '21, but for those four years, Passaic County has raised taxes the least amount, behind three other counties, I should say. So only Camden, Warren, and Essex County have raised taxes less than, than Passaic County has throughout the state. And I'm sure next year, when I do the same slide, that, that may even be better. Next slide. So our county tax rate has been reduced for the fifth year in a row, as you can see, significantly. And just to put that in perspective, that is the lowest, the .66 cents on every hundred is the lowest rate since 2011. Next slide. So on the revenue side of our budget, as you know, and thankfully, we have done this because no one ever knew a pandemic would hit, but the revenue side of many budgets throughout the state have been hit very hard with revenue shortfalls. Some of our neighboring counties have even had to go out and, and bond through a COVID Relief Bond Act. But here in Passaic County, because we have conservatively projected revenues through the year, we were really not hit poorly. The, the only revenues that really took a hit were the Sheriff's Department, and that mostly has to do with the fact that there is a moratorium on foreclosures. Ultimately, that money will, will, will begin to come in, but that is one area. And interest on investment, which is really not COVID-related, it's just a, a product of low interest rates from the bank. So under local revenue section A, the one and a half million dollars is a reduction of $1.1 million in sheriff's revenue, and we reduced interest on investments by about $600,000. Under section E, which is the other large reduction in revenues, that mostly is Pregnant Healthcare Center, which again, was hit hard with COVID. Obviously, we had 30-plus residents that passed away from, from COVID, and of course, we weren't accepting any new residents during the pandemic as well. So just to be cautious, we hit our, we hit our revenue mark of, at Pregnant this year. But again, just to be conservative, we thought it would be prudent, and we reduced the anticipated revenue for Pregnant Healthcare Center by $2 million this year. So as you can see, revenues combined are down about $3.9 million or 4%. All right, on the other side of the ledger, the appropriations, you'll see that the, the big issue is insurance. Insurance line item is down $8.3 million. As you know, beginning in 2020, we changed from Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield as our provider to Aetna, using Meritane as our third-party administrator. It has already paid tremendous dividends, as you can see. Our 2020, 2019 claims were $62 million. In 2020, the claims went down to $55 million. It was about a $6.6 million reduction in overall claims. Some of that, some of that savings could be COVID-related, you know, early on in the pandemic, obviously, people weren't getting, you know, some of the surgeries. But overall, I have to say, based on what we're seeing, Aetna is doing a great job in administering our plan the way it was meant to be administered.
I'm sorry, Tony, really quick, these 2020 numbers, those are not actual numbers, right?
You're looking at budget numbers here.
Those are budget numbers, okay.
Correct.
All right.
You'll see that our, our jail line item is down $3.3 million. And again, a lot of that has to do with bail reform and the fact that we have more than 50% reduction in our jail population. And, and honestly, right now, it is up slightly because the state is not taking prisoners as quickly as they usually do. But overall, the sheriff has done a great job, and again, in case I fail to mention it, all of our constitutional officers have been great partners in, in this budget process, and much of our success couldn't happen without their partnership in, in governing. So I want to thank the sheriff, our, our county clerk, our surrogate, for the job that they're doing and, and the partnership that we enjoy with them. And then the other large decrease is in debt service, and you'll see that debt service is down about $2.1 million this year. And again, we'll, we'll, we'll dig into some of that a little later in the presentation. So although the tax levy is not going up, we have been continually able to increase our fund balance, and you'll see the slide from 2014 to present. This year, we ended the year at $85.5 million in fund balance. I, I often say that many times during these presentations over my career, many freetholders will say, how much is enough? And I think if this pandemic has taught us anything, we don't know how much is enough. But again, raising fund balance, keeping the tax levy flat, I think, is a testament to this board's, you know, goal and, and mission of getting Passaic County's fiscal house in order. And what, again, just little perspective, in 2006, our surplus was only $10 million. And if you recall, 2006 is when we started, you know, the following years, 2007, 2008, 2009, is when we started hitting nationally the, the economic crisis that, that we all remember too well. Had we been in the position we are today, we would have fared much better during that time. So again, I think it was an eye-opener for all of us, and I commend this board for making the decision that it, that it made. So along with fund balance, we have a bunch of trust funds that over the years, and this is a little comparison from 2017, 19, and 20, ending in 20 on where we are on some of our, our trust fund reserves. You'll see workers' compensation is at $9.4 million. Our health benefits, which is another reason why I was able to reduce health benefits in this year's budget, we have $30 million sitting in reserves, which is more than half of what our claims were in 2019. I can, I can tell you, without looking at any other county who is in a self-insured program, and talking to our, our risk manager, that I, I can guarantee you that there's probably no other county that has those type of reserves for any, anything that you see here, but particularly in workers' comp health benefits and liability insurance. As you recall, many years back, the county used to bond to fund their self-insurance. We have gotten away from that, and again, have put the county in a great position to have fiscal stability for future generations. So our liability trust is at $23 million, and it's important to note as well that in the budget, in the operating budget for workers' compensation, we budget $3.5 million, and liability is $4.5 million. So that is about what we spend each year in both of those line items. So, you know, in our budget, we are budgeting for real-time what we expect we're, we're going to spend in any given year, and we've still been able to increase the trust funds as well. Snow removal, which, again, one of those, one of those trust funds that we didn't always have, and you'll see in, in 2017, it was less than $800,000. We finished the year at $5.8 million. This is an important one. In the beginning of the pandemic, the Division of Local Government Services allowed entities to tap into the snow removal trust to offset COVID expenses prior to us being fortunate enough to receive CARES money. So again, one of those trust funds that it's there when you need it, and certainly in 2000, in the beginning of 2020, we needed it. Our accumulated absences are up 4.4, up to $4.4 million. Unemployment compensation at $1.7 million. As you recall, we have an old county pension fund that is, has, I believe, still one active member in it, but we have increased those reserves to $4.2 million. And again, another one of those where we do budget in our operating budget every year for the cost of that pension. And this year, we started a new trust fund that the state allowed counties to, to create, which was a mosquito control. And we have just And we have just short of a million dollars. So as you can see, we have eighty million dollars in in trust fund reserves added to the fund balance, we have one hundred and sixty six million dollars. In in reserve. One of our policies, one of the policies that this board created many years ago was to never utilize more fund balance in a budget that we know we're going to regenerate in the following year. And this slide shows you that we have achieved that goal. Over the last several years, including this year, where we regenerated twenty seven million dollars in fund balance. So again, achieving our goals, this was certainly a challenging year to govern. With the pandemic, but I am proud to say that we have achieved a lot of what we set out to do despite the pandemic. That included rehabilitation of our courthouse annex in Patterson, where we have moved the court probation, family probation offices to. We were previously renting an entire floor at one hundred Hamilton. We no longer have that lease and is now in the courthouse annex. It's a beautiful space, and hopefully, one of these days, we'll be able to do a proper grand opening. It it really turned out beautiful to it's a gorgeous building. As you all know, we opened up a new DPW building in Wayne on Route twenty three behind Gary's Liquors. Which consolidated all of our operations into one location. Allowing us to sell three seventeen Pennsylvania Avenue for five point five million dollars. And we are in the process of selling the Pumped in Lakes project, which will become part of a redevelopment. In in Pumped in Lakes. It's a great location, it's right at the beginning of the Pumped in Lakes redevelopment zone. And that should be a very exciting, we're going to do that through our housing authority. And we're going to build senior and veteran housing on that property, along with office space for our housing department. To go as well as there may be some room for a doctor's office as well for the seniors. We were, we replaced this year the Morse Town Morse Town Road Culver in West Milford. We are coming to the end of our energy savings program, which was replacing boilers, changing over all of our lighting to LED. About the only area that we have not completed is at Preakness because of COVID. Workers don't have access to the facility, so we still have to do the lighting as well as the solar project up at Preakness. Our two thousand and nineteen road resurfacing project was completed as well as we did begin some of our two thousand and twenty. Two thousand and twenty will be carried over into two thousand and twenty one to finish that up. Our Gulf of Brook Road improvement, south of Diamond Bridge Avenue. That was the Ballfields area, the parking lot where the turf field is. The new, the new playground was opened as well. Our Dundee Island Park, our first park that the county has opened in over fifteen years in the city of Busake. Was opened this year and happy to say, prior to all the snow, was getting a lot of use by residents. Turned out beautifully, as I know you all know, but anyone on this call should take a ride down there, it really is a beautiful park. Our elevator renovations to our parking garage in the Board of Social Services. We have a five year plan to replace all of the elevators, and that was completed this year. I believe that was phase, I want to say phase one of of the project. We also had the landscaping project at the John J, the art center at the John J Ray House in Hawthorne. And our Highlands Preserve Athletic Field improvements in West Milford. They're about ninety percent done, they're doing the playground now. Again, got a little bit delayed because of of the recent snow. But that 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 really has turned out to be a beautiful complex up there. And hopefully, we'll be able to get up there sometime in the spring and and do a grand opening and. It really, it's a, it's a, it turned out to be a beautiful complex, and I think it's going to get a lot of use. And again, our our friends in West Milford and and the up county people should get a lot of enjoyment out of that. So we talked a little bit about reducing debt in the budget this year. This is a chart that shows the decline in our debt service over the the next. However, many years that is sixteen years, I guess. And as you can see. Debt service is on a decline. Again, back when we created the policy on 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 utilizing of fund balance in the budget. We also created a ten million dollar cap on how much debt we issue in any one year. And we are again, starting to see the fruits of that as well. So we talked about identifying shared services, these are just some of the shared services that we have in the county. It's now, I guess, twelve years since we closed our detention center and. And sent our youth down to Essex County, the the system has worked fantastic. We have a shared service relationship with Burton County to deal with our consumer affairs complaints. Our public health services, which. I won't be so bold to say, but I will tell you probably every. Every mayor or someone from the the four towns here, Heldon, Wannacue, Woodland Park and West Milford. Have said how how happy and how fortunate they were to be using the county health services, particularly during this pandemic. And I know, you know, we're all very proud of of Dr. Con Gill and her entire staff. They're doing a great job, and I think those four municipalities are being served very well. I I will tell you that we will be setting up meetings with three other municipalities. Who have reached out to us and also wants to talk about. Health services and 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 possibly ending into a shared service. We provide information technology, City of Busake, Borough Pumped in Lakes, Wannacue Board of Ed and the Borough of Wannacue, Borough of Woodland Park. We just entered into an agreement with with the township of Wayne to operate their their museums. And we are also talking to another municipality about the about taking over their historic site as well. We have some fueling agreements with Prosser Park and West Milford, and as you know, we have a shared service with Hawthorne that. Hawthorne brines county roads while they're brining their own, and that that has worked out very, very well. So we move on to, you know, what we hope to continue to be our our bright future as we come out of this pandemic. And we continue to invest in our infrastructure, our parks and our historic sites. This year, the long awaited replacement of the Fairlawn Avenue Bridge, we awarded that contract. We hope to go out to bid and award a contract for the improvement at Hamburg Turnpike and Alps Road Intersection in Wayne. The replacement and of the superstructure reconstruction of Spur Street Bridge in Patterson. We will complete, as I said earlier, our twenty twenty road resurfacing as well as begin our twenty twenty one road resurfacing program. We will go out the bit for the replacement of the Kingsland Avenue Bridge in Clifton. Replacement in the North Helen, North Helen Avenue Culver in North Heldon. We awarded a contract for the restoration of Lambert Castle in Patterson. We are under construction now for Rifle Camp Park Phase One improvements in Woodland Park, which includes. Bathrooms and a dog park among other amenities. We will start our Phase Two Elevator renovation at the courthouse here in Patterson. Our Highlands Rail Trail Phase One in Wannacue. And the Two Bridges Road Bridge and the West End Extension Project in Wayne and Lincoln Park is also underway. Next slide, Mike. So this slide shows. The tax base growth amongst all of our municipalities, and you'll see that. Every municipality has seen growth since two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty. In fact, as a, as as a county, the the increase has been fourteen point three six percent. Which is fantastic, and again, I think it shows that State County is a place that people want to be at the moment. I I think the the other, listen, there's no bad news on this slide. But I think probably the two things that stuck out to me most is that. Two of the highest increases are both in our urban centers, the city of Busake and the city of Patterson. Which bodes well for the entire county. The better that they're doing, the better we all will do throughout the county. So, you know, that's stuck out to me well, but you know, you'll see that whether it's, you know, Woodland Park at eleven percent. Wayne at seventeen percent. As I said, there's really no bad news on this slide, it's it's just all good news, and I think it shows. That Busake County is is a place people want to be.
Tony, really quick, but before you switch the slide. I remember a couple of years ago, Patterson lost about three billion dollars worth of valuation. You remember what year that was?
I would have to go back and look at it, Freeholder, I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, do you know where they started, because it almost, I feel like that seven billion number is is still less than what they lost. You know, several years ago, when they took that big hit.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly could be, this is only going back to fifteen, so I think if we go back into that, you know, i- into that economic downturn in in the late two thousand. I I think you probably see all of these numbers. Would be a lot less, but I, you know, I could certainly go back.
Sorry, thank you.
And I may have called you Freeholders, so I I'm gonna. I got a jar on my desk, I'm throwing a dollar in every time I do it, I apologize.
Mister Administrator, just just want to understand, these numbers represent the total value of all property, both commercial and residential in these municipalities?
I I'll defer to Steve or Rich on that, I I'm I'm not sure whether this is commercial as well as residential.
Yeah, this is, this is the total ratable base.
Total, right, so it includes everything.
Includes everything that can be, yeah, that that would be rateable, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then one of the, you know, one of the the revenues that was not affected by by COVID was our real estate transfers fees. And you'll see that we did see a slight uptick in two thousand and twenty. In our, in our revenue, in our real estate transfer revenues. Again, just from perspective, you'll see back in two thousand and eleven, it was, it was only three million dollars. I think we have a ways to go, but this is again, this is a good trend, and I think we're on a on a positive upswing. So just again, just a little bit of statistics that medium home sales in Busake County were three hundred seventy one thousand nine hundred thirty eight dollars in two thousand and twenty. That was eleventh highest of in in the state countywide. That was up three point nine percent over last year. Predictions are that home values will continue to go up. And as you can see, as compared to the state medium home sale of two hundred thirty six thousand three hundred, Busake County was far ahead of that. So again, I am, I am very pleased to announce once again that. The county tax levy will stay flat for the third year in a row and. The fourth time in the last five years, and I will be happy to take any questions, I don't know if there's. If Rich or Stephen want to add anything to that presentation or anything that I missed. Please feel free, but we'll entertain.
I would just like, I would just like to say, I'd like to go back for a second to the bond rating history. And if you notice that. Nineteen ninety eight. The Utility Authority debacle, the county was downgraded, it took eleven years. To get upgraded. And we haven't looked back since. And I think that's a testament to all the hard work that everybody's put in over the last. Ten or twelve, fourteen years in getting this county. To. Be one of the premier counties in terms of fiscal stability and structural budget balance. And it's a testament to everybody on this board and the administration. And that's all I got to say.
You're part of that, Steve, we will thank you too, it's a great team. Pat's been chairing the Budget Committee since Pat's been born. He did it back when he was a baby. You know, it it just speaks to the team that that's been put in place here, and Tony, I give you a lot of that credit. For building this over the years, we got good people in great places, and it's paying off, so we thank you all who who service this county.
Director, if I might, Commissioner Duffy here, I agree, Bruce, we got a great team out there and Pat leading the way and Sandy. Really, I should be more proud to be a small part of this team. And Steve, you've done a great job over the years, Kay Hill, the same as well. Thank you. I'm standing by here.
I I would just like to. To address, so there are three resolutions on the consent agenda, number nine, ten and eleven. Those resolutions are to allow the surrogate's office, the sheriff's office and the superintendent of the law office to exceed. The their individual caps. So if you recall, I'm I'm not even sure what year it was, when we had the issue. With prior superintendent of elections where she negotiated a. A collective bargaining agreement without the county ever being at the table. Gave out eighteen percent raises, bonuses to county employees, which I've never heard of bonuses for government employees. I had lobbied to get the law changed and to make sure that the counties would always be at the table as it pertained to. Economic issues. Along with that, the legislature created these individual caps for the constitutional officers that they couldn't exceed two percent. It is offset by revenues as well. So because the Sheriff's Department revenues were down so significantly. He did not meet that, but overall, his budget was up less than one percent. If if you look at it, the superintendent of elections, she doesn't collect revenue. But as we move into a different time now with elections, there's a lot more that needed. And she needs a couple of, you know, a couple of additional bodies that threw her over the cap. And the surrogate as well, though she does collect some revenue. That revenue did not increase as much, so. This is the first time since the law is enacted that we're asking to do it. But I I thought that under the circumstances, while I have fought that pretty hard prior to this year. I thought that it was necessary to do, and this will create a new base year for them as well.
I think that's there, Anthony.
So if there are no other questions, that would.
Can I just make a quick statement, Mister Director, if you don't mind? I just want to point out the fact that, you know, first of all, I, you know, we all agree that this is a tremendous job. Done by Tony and our finance team, but I I just want to point out that the federal government. We were lucky enough to get CARES Act money to supplement our efforts during this pandemic. And that's not a favor the federal government did to us, New Jersey gets back less federal money than we send to Washington. So I'm glad that we were to get some of that back, but if we did not, it's potentially likely that we would have to raise taxes. Due to no fault of our own, but due to the pandemic, back on the people who are suffering due to the pandemic. So and you know, when when they're negotiating in Washington right now for relief to states and municipalities and others. I think this is an example of how we were able to help folks here and not put a greater burden on them. Because we got the help we needed at a time where at something that was much bigger than the county.
And Commissioner Rocker, I mean, I I agree with you wholeheartedly and and you know, the, you know, I every year I ask the same of the board, you know, what our, you know. What our intentions are for this year, and I think every Freeholder that I spoke to said the same thing, that, you know, under the circumstances with people. That I say Freeholder.
Yeah, you're not.
I'm gonna be able to retire quick. The commissioners, well, when I asked, you were Freeholders. But but every, 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 every commissioner said the same thing, that, you know, under the circumstances with the pandemic. That if we could hold taxes flat again, that that was your goal, and we were able to make that happen. But you know, you guys recognize the importance of it, there's a lot of people hurting out there, and, you know, we can do it, it's not a gimmick, it's real. And I, you know, obviously, I would, you know, I've come to you before having to raise taxes. Because we, because we needed to, there were, there were situations that required it. But I I think, you know, I think we all thought it was very important not to do that. And and if I could just mention one other thing too, you know, we did receive the CARES money. And one of the things that this board did too as well with the with the money is, you know, we granted. Close to forty million dollars, thirty nine million dollars to our municipalities. And I I have to tell you, I mean, that that was a great thing that you guys did, we certainly could have kept all of the money, some of the CARES counties did do that. But it really was a great partnership with our municipalities. You know, I know that they all appreciate the fact that you were willing to help them offset and mitigate some of the costs due to the pandemic. And and their response. uh and and their response to the pandemic. Uh, and and, you know, when we talk about the county, it's a county as a whole, right? So we're we're only, we're only as successful as our 16 municipalities are successful. Uh, and I think that was a great thing that uh that you guys offered to do, uh, you know, along with the other programs of helping, uh, you know, helping business owners meet some of their needs and uh now moving into a rental assistance as well for uh people who are having difficulty staying in their homes. So I'll shut up now.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Uh, I would just like to acknowledge the work of uh Anthony, um, Steve's office, uh, Rich, our CFO, our auditor, Steve Wilcox, um, our Department of Division heads, our constitutional officers, the sheriff, county clerk, county council, and um and our surrogate. Um, it's it's been said so many times, it is a team effort. Um, one of my um main goals, my own personal goal, is to stay out of the way and let the people who know what they're doing do their job. And it has been a good goal on my part. Uh, and the and the proof is in the pudding here. We have continually improved our status, improved our financial footing. Um, and it almost, it almost, it looks like it's easy because we've done it so many, so many times uh uh over the last few years, uh, but it's not. And uh, one of the things uh that we have done or our administrator have done, uh, is start at the planning process early, uh, allowing us to introduce our budget uh nearly two months ahead of the state mandated deadline, which is important. Um, and that could not happen without the full cooperation, uh, which we didn't always have, but we've have it now, the Department, uh, Department Heads, Division Directors, and Constitutional Officers. Um, and another thing is the municipalities uh benefit also by getting this budget out ahead of time, is that the towns will know uh what's what's gonna happen with the county budget, and they'll be able to work on their budgets quicker uh and uh, you know, with greater efficiency. So there's a lot of moving parts to this budget, uh, to all budgeting. Uh, it involves a lot of people, and at the end of the day, the hard work uh has paid off. So I want to thank every one of you uh for what you've done. I want to thank my colleagues uh on the board here who are a significant part of this effort and uh and we'll move right along here. Now, I'll shut up.
And and I'm sorry, just one other um uh note is uh March 9th at 5:30 will be the public hearing and the hopeful adoption. Our budget has to go through a review process uh at the Division of Local Government Services. Uh, hopefully, they will uh, uh, they will approve it for uh adoption on March the 9th at 5:30, and there'll be a public hearing as well. There'll be a public hearing regardless of whether we get the approval. Um, but I feel confident we'll we'll get the approval. And then just one other bit of housekeeping. Um, so my, uh, the new Deputy County Administrator for Passaic County is 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 on the WebEx. Mark Seaman is here, Mark Wave. There he is. I know some of you have stopped in and said hello to him. Uh, this is his uh second week. He came back after the first week, so that's always a good sign. So I want to welcome Mark, uh, and I, we have a lot of high hopes for him.
Okay. All right, um, let's move on. We're good. Let's move on to uh get the right page here.
We're at page two. No, there.
This is suspend order of business. It's a regular order of business, budget. So we're there, uh, H, uh, I, I actually were on.
Page two. Well, you know what, uh, Director, let me give you a a separate uh better uh.
Hold on a second. I buried a page here somewhere.
We're on page two, Pat.
Okay. Motion to suspend the regular order of business.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Dove, uh, Octor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Budget matters. Are we doing this as one motion or?
No, Director, it's all, it's separate.
Okay. Motion to adopt on first reading the 2021 cap resolution to exceed the index rate NJSA 40A colon 45 colon 15, as noted in the resolution. Need a motion? Move it. Moved by Commissioner Lizarra's.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bartlett, I believe.
Correct. Um, County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Need a motion for resolution introducing the Passaic County budget for fiscal year 2021 and adopting the same on first reading in accordance with the requirement of the local budget law, all as noted in the resolution.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lizarra. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. And finally, read the public notice for the public hearings for the cap resolution of the Passaic County budget for 2021 on March 9th, 2021 at 5:30 PM.
Uh, which will be advertised in the Herald News and posted on our website uh and social media.
Okay, no vote taken on that, right?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Next is Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 01. A bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equip equipment and machinery in, by, and for the county of Passaic, New Jersey to appropriate the sum of $14 million to pay for the course, the cost thereof to appropriate capital surplus to make a down payment or fully fund the appropriations from the Capital Improvement Fund to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for such issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. I need a motion to open the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 01.
So moved.
By Commissioner Bartlett, second by Commissioner Duffy, I believe.
Correct. Uh, County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Uh, does anyone uh present desire to be heard on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 01? Given the fact that we're um doing this uh virtually, I'm gonna wait for uh Louie, for you to give me the high high sign that we can figure.
Okay, uh, there is nothing, no one in our chat room right now, and uh I do have comments for 02 and 03, but I do not have comments for 01.
Okay.
Oh, second.
Um, I think with the motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Commissioner Octor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James. Second by.
Second.
Commissioner Lizarra. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy uh Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02. Bond Ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for the State County Community College in and by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of $4,980,000 to pay for the cost thereof to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Motion to open a public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02. I'll move it. Motion made by Commissioner Lizarra. Second by Commissioner Bartlett.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02? Little while turn it to you.
Director, we have a uh comment from Ann Schnackenberg, 268 Washington Ave, Clifton, New Jersey, 07001 regarding Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02, Section 1, Public Improvements to the Passaic County Community College in, by, and for County Rifle Camp Park Environmental Center and Observatory, Woodland Park Construction and Equipment of Observatory. While I'm glad to see some movement taking place to improve the equipment the observatory up at the nature center, could you please elaborate on what kind of construction as well as the scope and status of this project? An update on the current plan for the nature center and observatory would also be appreciated. The nature center and the observatory and its programs are also a system graph where one wants wonderful resources for the public. What will be able to, what what will we be able to look forward to when the improvements are is completed? Thank you, Ann Schnackenberg. And also, Micah, do we have anybody waiting to make comments?
We do not.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to close public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02. Motion made by Commissioner Duffy. Second.
Do you want me to second it?
Bartlett.
Second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
Uh, County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02.
Director, do you, do you, would you like me to just um speak to Ann's question?
Sure.
So we do not have a, we do not have a design yet, uh, but as soon as, you know, obviously, we're waiting for a funding source. Uh, the college will hire an architect to do some of the design. Uh, for the most part, conceptually, it's going to be a classroom for the college that will, um, you know, be a learning center. It'll be a lot of flex space. When the college isn't using it, we'll be able to use it. It will have the um telescope as well, only a new and uh more modern one as well as, as well as being more handicapped accessible. So once, once we get to that uh point, we will obviously bring a conceptual design here. We'll do a presentation so that everyone can see. Hopefully, we'll be to a point where we can do some public outreach uh as well and get comments from the public.
Okay, thank you. I'll now take a motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 02.
I'll move it.
Moved by Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lizarra. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 03. Bond Ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology, telecommunications equipment, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal systems equipment, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment for Passaic County Community College in and by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey to appropriate the sum of $2,96,160 to pay for the cost thereof to authorize the issuance of bonds and to finance such appropriations and provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Need a motion to open a public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 03. By Commissioner Lizarra. Second by Deputy Director James.
County Commissioner Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anyone wishing to uh present desire to be heard on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 03? Uh, I'll turn it over to Lou.
Okay, uh, Ann Schnackenberg again, uh, regarding Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 03. Could you please clarify if any of these various renovations, improvements, and acquisitions for the Passaic County Community College are related to its main campus, or do they involve the Rifle Camp Park Environmental Center and Observatory? Thank you, Ann Schnackenberg. And uh, Micah, do we have any other comments or anybody waiting?
We do not.
Okay, thank you.
Would you go, Lou?
Uh, yes, Director.
Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing on Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 03.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by, I think, Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Anthony, you want to answer Schnackenberg's answer, a question?
Yeah, it does not.
It does not.
It does not.
Okay. Motion to adopt Bond Ordinance 2021 dash 03.
Make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Lizarra, second by.
I'll second it. Duffy.
Uh, Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. I believe we have a a a commissioner report by uh.
Director, if we could just do have a motion to come out to the regular of business.
I'll move that.
All right, moved by Commissioner James, second by Commissioner Duffy. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Uh, again, I believe Commissioner Best has a report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Director. Uh, just really quick, not to take too much time. Uh, as we know, last week, we um received or experienced over 30 inches of snow in the county of Passaic, and I just wanted to commend the outstanding job that the entire county did in clearing our roads. It was a um, all hands on deck operation. It wasn't just our roads department, but it was also our sheriff's department, our buildings and grounds crew, our mosquito control, and our parks department. Everyone played a vital role in making sure that our streets were safe and clear. I think as soon as the uh storm stopped within a couple of hours, we were already down to blacktop uh, uh, early, early Tuesday morning. And then right after that, we got another four to six inches. Uh, and and again, I just want to commend the guys for a great job they did. We're expecting more snow this week and this weekend. Uh, so again, everyone stay safe and uh pray for all our workers out there uh making our roadway safe for you to travel on when it's done. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Director.
Okay. Um, I'll take a motion to open a public portion of the meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by. Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Lou, do we have any?
Okay. We have from William, Saitowitz from West Milford. He is asking the commissioners, are the energy, are the energy saving projects a part of the state energy savings improvement program? I believe he's referring to the, during the budget, budget presentation. That's all I have. Public, Passaic County and Jay. And, Micah, do we have anybody?
I do not.
Okay.
I'll move to close the public portion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy to close, second by Commissioner
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anthony, do you have an answer for that?
I'm not exactly sure what he means, but it, it, it did need to be approved by the Board of Public Utilities, the program. So I'm not sure, I don't know if Richard, I'm, I'm not sure what, what he means by the state program.
I do believe that we are receiving rebates from the state of New Jersey.
Right. Rebates is part of the, as part of, if that's what he means, he's
It's an ESIP. It's, he's talking about the ESIP program and it's a DCEP program that we do. So that has to be vetted, as you said, by the Board of Public Utilities. It's got to be cash flow positive, as you know. So if that's what he's asking, it's been approved.
Lou, if you want to give him my email address, I'd be happy to, you know, talk to him offline.
This was our own program where we did, we did a bond ordinance. Again, as, as mentioned, we had all the approvals through the state. But we weren't part of any statewide consortium or, or anything like that.
No, but it's called the DCEP program.
Energy saving improvement, right.
Yeah, that's, that's what it was. That's what he's asking and that's what it is.
Okay. Item R, we're gonna need a two-thirds vote on this resolution.
Director, one more. I know Mr. Wilcox has to get to another meeting. So Steve, anytime you want to drop off, please feel free.
Right. I'm feeling free. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Stay healthy and be safe. Take care, everybody.
I'll move R one.
Deputy Director Commissioner James is moving R one. Second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Consent agenda is S one to S forty-three. Are there any late starters?
Director, I do have two late starters. S forty-four, a resolution authorizing Passaic County Purchasing Agent to advertise and receive bids for the Goffleboro Park Ray Avenue Athletic Field Improvements Project in the borough of Hawthorne, New Jersey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash twenty-three at SEC. And S forty-five, resolution rejecting all bids received for carriage house restoration rehabilitation project, project number C dash twenty-one dash zero zero one pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash three point two at SEC and authorizing direct negotiations for the award of contract for the carriage house restoration rehabilitation project pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon eleven dash five three at SEC. There is no need for a negative session and just my daily reminder of any county commissioners want something removed from the consent agenda to just do that through the director.
Any, any questions on the late starters, S forty-four and S forty-five?
No.
Okay. I'll take a motion to add the late starters to the consent agenda.
Make that motion.
By Commissioner Bartlett. Second by Commissioner Deputy Director James. Roll call. Roll call.
Lou, you still there?
I apologize. I was muted. I apologize. Let me start over again. County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. I'll take a motion to move S one to S forty-five.
I'll move it.
By Commissioner
I'll second. Duffy makes it. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner James. Roll call.
Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. And the new business personnel.
I'll move the personnel agenda.
Moved by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Need a motion for the bills?
I'll move the bills list.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Director.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Assad. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Stay safe.
All right.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.